Well, good morning, everyone. This commission conference meeting is now called to order. Do we have anyone that is here signed in to speak today?
Yes, ma'am. We have a representative of Comcast, Mr. Ronnie Colvin. He's the senior director. He's here to talk about broadband expansion, and he left some items at each one of your seats today.
Okay, that's a hot topic, broadband expansion. We're happy to hear. Good morning, Mr. Colvin.
Yes, good morning. My name is Ronnie Colvin. I'm senior director of external affairs for Comcast. Spent my entire career with the company and have been affiliated with the Mobile area here for a very long time. This is our third broadband expansion grant in the In-Mobile County. We got a grant in 2020 for Dolphin Island. And as you can see, I did provide you just a quick deck just to kind of overview what we're doing. We also got a grant in 2021 to serve 240 unserved passings. And there's a map on there that we actually ended up building a little over 400 passings as part of that grant. Finished it. We have two years to do each project. So far, in the first two, we finished, excuse me, in about a year and a half. So we finished ahead of schedule. And the project that we were just awarded is the largest we've received to date in the Mobile County area. It's the project area awarded passings was 956. We received $686,000 grant award from the state. And then Comcast is making an investment of $4.4 million of its investor capital. We are going to build some additional passings as part of this. We're going to, again, the award was for 956. We're going to build about 1,800 passings in the area because a lot of it will be going through passing, you know, existing residences that weren't a part of the grant area, but we are going to build those. And we've got a two-year window to complete that. And the area is, I guess, from a community standpoint, it's Fernland, the Alabama Port in Mont Louie. And the maps of the kind of proposed area is on the subsequent pages there for you. And we are going to have, as it always is, when we built the Dolphin Island, for instance, there's a lot of water crossings. There is, I don't think there's as much of wetlands as it was when we built the Dolphin Island, but there's some railroad permits that we'll have to get and some highway, state highway permits, et cetera. So those are, you know, those are always things that we try to jump on first because they can take, you know, they can take a little longer than normal permits with, you know, with the power company. As I mentioned, we've got 24 months to complete. We've already started walking out the area and looking at it and getting our design work done. And again, hopefully, we should see no issues to complete this one on time as well and hopefully ahead of schedule. This one is a little different from a technology standpoint. We are doing fiber to the home, fiber to the premise with this bill. So that will allow us to offer symmetrical speeds for the first time in Mobile County. So it's a little bit different in this bill. So we're excited about that. And like we've got a, I've got a presentation tonight at the Fowl River Community Center. Representative Chip Brown is putting that on. So we'll be talking with the residents in that area tonight, anybody that shows up to kind of let them know what, I've got a big map that we're going to present tonight and show everyone, you know, where we're going to be, you know, activating service. The last thing that I wanted to mention to you, and I gave you some materials on that. We will have some lower income product available and as we do in all of Mobile County, in the city of Mobile. It's Internet Essentials. We've been, we've had that product out for about 11 years now. It's $9.95. It's a 50-meg product, 50 down, 5 up. And we also participate in the ACP program, the Affordable Connectivity Program sponsored by the federal government. You get $30 to apply toward, you know, if you qualify, you, you know, you go online, qualify. We are a participating company, so you can apply $30 towards your Internet bill. So both of those programs, as we, as we launch into this new area, will be available. And one other thing I did want to mention, as we build and do construction, we'll turn on the area as we, as we complete it. We won't wait till the very end and, you know, light everything up. So as we, as we can turn on new homes, you know, we'll, we'll do that. So some, you know, in theory, may get their, their service by the middle of next year. So, but again, we've got two full years to complete the project. So happy to answer any questions. And again, we're excited. Been in this market since 1986. So this is just, you know, it's a, it's a good thing for us to be able to do this.
This is great news. I was wondering, should additional funding come available through state or federal grants with, with the western area of the county also? Would you be moving up into that area?
I would be very happy if you could send me any data you have, any information you have where we can look at it. We, there is additional rounds of grants, state funding available. And, and, and we would love to, you know, love to apply if the areas are eligible. So you've got my business card there with my email on it. So if you've got any areas you'd like for us to look at and see they're eligible, please, please send them my way.
Will do.
Anybody else?
Commissioners, anything?
Are these, there's two separate projects, I guess, three? Are they going to run parallel? Or are you going to start in a certain area and move to the other? I see like the Fernland area up off of government, off of Highway 90. I mean, and then the other one, I guess, is Mont Louie.
Yeah, the, we built down, when we went to Dolphin Island, that'll be our tie-in point. And it was, I'm trying to think of the, it was Bellingrath Road. That is the main fiber route. So more than likely, we'll come off and build to the north area first just because that, that'll be our tie-in point is the, there's a fiber that runs from our office here all the way down to Dolphin Island, so on Bellingrath. All right?
Thank you so much, Mr. Colvin, for being here and sharing this with us today.
We'll keep you posted as we, you know, as we start moving forward. And, and again, hopefully, we get the project finished ahead of schedule. Thank you.
Additional? Okay.
Good morning, commissioners. Number one, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October 11, 2022. Number two, approve list of claims. Number three, hold a public hearing so any citizen of the county shall be given an opportunity to be heard for or against any item related to the statement of revenues, expenditures, and change in fund balance report. Number four, approve request of the sheriff's office to add one internally purchased vehicle to their fleet as follows. The addition of this vehicle will not increase their fleet. Number five, adopt a resolution declaring certain items assigned to the county garage surplus and authorize their removal from fixed assets list to be disposed of by lawful means. Number six, approve request of the city of Bayou La Batre to purchase the following surplus vehicle from the county garage for fair market value, task follows. Number seven, approve appropriation contract with the city of Bayou La Batre, an amount of $5,000 for District 3 funds for the purchase of vehicle declared as surplus from the county garage. Number eight, approve lease agreement with Sims Women's Club, Inc. and Mobile County Commission, term of 10 years, beginning on January 1, 2023, and ending on December 31, 2032. Number nine, approve reappointment of the city of Citronelle Chief of Police Christopher McLean to continue to serve as member of the Board of Commissioners of the Mobile County Communications District. Number 10, adopt a resolution declaring certain items assigned to the county garage surplus and authorize their removal from the fixed assets list to be disposed of by lawful means. Number 11, approve request of the Grand Bay District to purchase the following surplus vehicle from the county garage for fair market value as follows. Number 12, approve appropriation contract with Grand Bay Fire District, an amount of $3,500 from District 3 funds for the purchase of a vehicle declared as surplus from the county garage. Number 13, approve the contract with the city of Chickasaw, an amount of $150,000 from District 1 funds for Chickasaw Valley Road Drainage Project. Number 14, approve professional services agreement with Logical Computer Solutions, Inc. for a three-year term, beginning November 1, 2022, for a monthly fee of $1,008.50 for design, monitoring, and management of complete disaster recovery backup computer server systems of Exchange SQL and web servers for probate court. Number 15, approve professional service contract with Logical Computer Solutions, Inc. for a three-year term, beginning November 17, 2022, for a monthly fee of $3,100 and shall automatically renew on a month-to-month basis unless a different term is agreed upon in writing by the parties for design, monitoring, and management of complete disaster recovery backup computer server systems of Pioneer Data Base, web servers, and application servers for probate court. Number 16, approve appropriation contract with African Town Heritage Preservation Foundation, an amount of $150,000 from District 1 funds for general operations and conservation of the Old Plateau Cemetery. Number 17, approve our sponsorship agreement with the Coltilda Descendants Association, an amount of $3,500 from District 1 funds for its annual spirit of our ancestors' festival. Number 18, approve sponsorship agreement with Distinguished Young Women of Alabama in a total amount of $300 to be divided as follows for Distinguished Young Women of Alabama program. Number 19, approve sponsorship agreement with Family Counseling Center Mobile, Inc. doing business as lifelines counseling services, $7,500, to be divided as follows for its annual Bay Area Brunch Fest fundraising event. Number 20, approve amendment to sub-recipient agreement with South Alabama Regional Planning Commission, Inc. for provision of senior services programs to extend the term of the agreement from October 31, 2022 to April 30, 2023. 21, award bid to Shade America, Inc. for Sims Community Center Park Shade Structures for a total bid in the amount of $39,880. 22, authorize advertising and receiving bids for three-year detention, lock, inspection, and cleaning. 23, rescind change order number two with Huges Plumbing and Utility Contractors for project African Town Heritage House. If implemented, the change will rescind change order number two, dated October 11, 2022. No change or, no change to the contract, and the contract will remain at $1,455,500. 24, authorize assignment of Dale Consulting to Government Plaza Auditorium light upgrade for the proposed fee of $6,000. Work will consist of the design bidding and construction administration associated with the replacement of the lighting fixtures and associated with lighting controls for Government Plaza Auditorium. 25, authorize advertising and receiving bids to rebid project Whistler Bicycle Trail Park Improvements. No bids were received.
Do we have any idea why this Gordon here, why nobody bid it? Do we get any feedback?
It might be because it's a smaller project, and they're all really busy right now. That's what I'm hearing.
Oh, this is a Gordon project? I didn't know, I don't know whether you're in it or not.
Yes, ma'am, we're bidding it for grants. But I think the companies are pretty busy right now. It was, it's a widespread project and just didn't drum up enough interest for this go-around. So we're going to try that again.
Okay.
We've, we've had several projects. We didn't receive bids on, another one, we're asking for bids again, so.
So did anybody show up at the pre-bid conference?
Yes, ma'am. I believe we had several show up at the pre-bid, and they either got busy or decided they weren't interested in it at the time.
Okay, thank you.
Number 26, read. Seated budget. 27, authorize, authorize advertising, receiving bids for the project installation of emergency generator at African Town Heritage House for eighth-floor renovations and information technology training room revisions for a total bid in the amount of $562,875. 29, adopt a resolution approving South Alabama Utilities merger with MCB Water Authority, Inc., pending legal review.
Commissioners, just for the record, we are expecting a letter from the MCB board consenting to this. I should have that later today tomorrow when I get off, send to everybody. It's about 220 water customers, and it's a very friendly jointly agreed upon.
Friendly merger?
It is. And there's some debt that MCB has, which will be paid in full by South Alabama Utilities. No more than 220 customers is what I was told as latest this morning, so. Correct, very small.
Water Authority.
Right. Thank you.
Number 30, approve appropriation contract with Gulf Quest Maritime Museum of the Gulf Coast, an amount of $62,500 for installation of exhibition Spirits of Passage to be available for viewing from January 4, 2023 through June 17, 2023, subject to completion of documentation. 31, approve amendment number seven to the Mobile County Park Initiative Contract with Motte McDonald, Alabama, LLC, dated June 25, 2021, to add Task 8 bidding and construction engineering inspection services for project Bayfront Park Restoration and Improvement. 32, approve a grant application to Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs on behalf of Mobile County District Attorney's Office for the continuation of the Domestic Violence Initiative Grant in the amount of $63,000 with local match of 25%. 33, approve appointment of Angie Goodrow to represent District 3 as a member of the board of the review for the Mobile County Junk Control Ordinance effective October 24, 2022. 34, approve contract with Hydra Services, Inc. in the amount of $21,461.56 for replacement of the Sludge Lagoon Pump at North Mobile County Industrial Park. The project will be paid for out of the Environmental Services Department budget. 35, approve renewal support agreement with Unity Fiber, Inc. an amount of $7,383.01 for two-ring dashboards and wall boards, three-year support for period of August 26, 2022 through August 25, 2025 for the county commission. 36, consider taking the following actions on bids. 37, approve a renewal of generator preventive maintenance agreement with Thompson Cat from the current purchasing cooperative agreement Sourcewell contract in a total amount of $41,222.86 for the following locations for the county commission. 38, approve a 36-month lease agreement with the Xerox from current state of Alabama contract, an amount of $1,0576.13 per month for the following, and this is for the licensed commissioner's office. 39, approve a contract with Alight Solutions, LLC, to provide application management services related to workday system for the period of 12 weeks, subject to final legal review. We have two add-ons, Commissioner. First add-on is approve a recommendation of the Mobile County Board of Health to add the following proposed fees as required by Section 1 Act 80-332. Second add-on, we just received, this a few minutes ago, and it's adopt a resolution, "Operations Observing Operations Green Light in Mobile County, November 7 through November 13, 2022. Shine a light of appreciation, hope, and support for our nation's veterans." And we do have an injured care board meeting on Monday.
Is there anyone here from the Health Department that can up and explain these fees, please?
Good morning.
Please state your name and address when you get up to them.
My name is Paul Betros. I'm with Mobile County Health Department. Do you want my home address or the?
You can give your work address.
251 North Bayou Street in Mobile.
I was looking over these fees. Could you give us an explanation for the fees and the increases, please?
Sure.
Also, you have a couple here that has a current fee and then a proposed fee. And then there's several who do not have a current fee that has a proposed fee.
Sure. So the STD registration fee is basically a processing fee for the registration. It doesn't pay for the cost of the visit. We get funding from the state Health Department and some other activities to pay for the actual visit. So this is just a registration fee. We've had the dollar fee since about 1982. So we have some additional calls for supplies and things of that nature, too. So we're just recommending like a $4 increase. So it's a minimal amount. The document fee is, with the onset of COVID, we've had requests for religious exemptions, for medical exemptions for COVID. So to process that paperwork, we need to add a fee for that. So we have individuals coming in asking for those. The venipuncture fee, we've had some veterinarians ask us to give rabies or pre-exposure rabies vaccinations. And we also need to do titers, which is testing the blood to see if their antibodies are still good. So we needed to add that fee.
So the current fees are zero?
So we have no fees for that. Now, the immunization fees are a little bit different. In the past, we have listed each immunization out, and we have listed a, like an administrative fee. So what's happened is, like with COVID, we didn't have that immunization fee because, you know, COVID just came along. And those vaccines, of course, were given to us for free, so we've not been charging. But whenever we need to change, like an MMR shot, a rabies pre-exposure vaccination shot, those would be due to things that we're not currently doing. We do the MMRs, but the pre-exposure vaccinations for rabies. So what we would like to do is just make a generic recommendation that we use the Blue Cross and Blue Shield or Medicare because those fluctuate as far as cost. You know, vaccines go up. They don't usually go down, but they go up. So the current fee we have for a rabies vaccination is like $200 a dose. Well, now it costs $408 a dose, so.
That's your cost?
That's, we're paying $350 for it. And there are three doses in that series, so it could be, you know, several hundred more dollars. And then the injection fee is simply, you know, the fee to administer the injection. Currently, it's $15 that we have. And the rate now is about $28. So this would let us automatically adjust those rates. Blue Cross and Blue Shield, Medicare, they publish these rates once a year, in fact, in October. It's based on the usual and customary rate. And then we would just have a fee for one year, and then we would adjust it every October. And that's what's typically done, you know, in the medical field.
Do the, these fees don't preclude people who are lower income from receiving some of these vaccinations?
If they come to the family health portion of the agency, which is our federally qualified health center, they can get slid. You know, there's a slide for that.
A sliding scale?
There's a sliding fee scale for income.
Okay, okay.
Most people come in for travel vaccines for the Health Department side, and they don't qualify for sliding income. You know, like a yellow fever and what I mentioned about the rabies vaccine, those individuals are not going to have sliding fees.
So aside from the registration fee and document fee, really, all the rest are new fees to be charged that you're already administering but not receiving?
No, the vaccination fees, like I mentioned, are individually listed.
Right, okay.
And then we have an administrative fee. So we, instead of, when a new vaccine comes along, we don't particularly want to use the board's time and the county's commission's time to come back and add one at a time.
I see.
Like with COVID, with rabies, and things of that nature.
So I guess my main question, these fees apply to people who don't qualify for the slide. If you qualify for a slide, then the fee may not be that amount. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that's, that was what I was concerned is making sure that.
No, anybody who.
I guess people who couldn't afford the fee was on some kind of program that.
No, anybody who qualifies for the sliding fee scale, it would be applied.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Betros. Okay, any other questions? All right, Mr. Kegley.
Very good. Good morning, commissioners. We would ask that you consider taking the following action on October 24. One, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds for the properties listed below. Item two, adopt a resolution authorizing the acquisition of certain real property by eminent domain for Track 23 on one of our 2018 page ago projects. And commissioners, this is due to title issues on the property not being able to be resolved. So we're going to let probate court handle that for us. Item three, approve setting the following speed limits as listed below for Jim McNeil Loop Road East, Jim McNeil Loop Road North, and Jim McNeil Loop Road West. Item four, approve preliminary and final plat of D&amp;J Corner, which is in Commission District 3, and approve preliminary and final plat of Risa Division of Lots 54 and 55, Mandrell's Addition to Hollinger's Island, that is also in Commission District 3. Item five, authorize assenti to the county engineer's approval of an extension of the approval for the preliminary plat for one year from the previous date of approval for Bayview Village. Item six, approve Mossap Road continuing in the program for acceptance, maintenance, and regulation of certain unimproved roads in accord with Act 2019-307 and be granted one additional year to complete all requirements set forth in the act for acceptance into the county road maintenance system. Item seven, approve reimbursable agreement for relocation of utility facilities with Alamo Power on one of our 2018 page ago projects. Estimated cost $41,776. Item eight, approve change order number two on the Mobile County Soccer Complex concession and restroom facility. Item nine, approve CCP 10-2022 for design and construction of the Mobile County Soccer Complex. Item 10, approve right-of-way or easement agreement for Track 5 on one of our 2018 page ago projects. And that is currently it, Commissioner.
What's nine? What's that?
That's.
It looks like, I mean.
It's setting, we're doing it in phases. And so it just, it moves from one phase. This is phase three, correct?
Can we just add phase three?
Is it, Brian, is that?
Yeah, that would be helpful for me, Brian, to add the phase to it so that we can keep track of it.
Okay, I believe it is for phase three, Commissioner.
Because it looks, when it says design, it looks like it just started.
For the whole thing, I know. We have an umbrella, and we just keep adding things under it, those phases.
Okay, so we'll add phase three to that, Commissioner.
Okay.
And that's currently it.
And will there, and should we decide to bid this one? Then we'll do that separately, or what?
Well.
How will we work that?
It, you can't bid professional services, but.
Or award separately?
We will, we'll do advertising to select a consultant for that. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, but this just allows us to move forward and do that?
It does, yes, ma'am. Set the project number, allow us to move ahead.
Okay, Mr. Barclift, welcome to the table. You got anything to add?
You brushed your hair this morning, it was nice. I got a, hey, Jerry Carl had sent me a razor and a bar of soap. I had, and I shaved my beard off, so I might send it over to you.
Didn't last long, did it?
Do you need another bar of soap?
Okay, commissioners, any comments, anything to add?
I was asked to.
I was asked to remind you that, let's see, we have. When did we say? Cherie, I may need, oh, October twenty-fourth, that's Monday. October twenty-fourth is the deadline to register to vote for the November eighth election. So just a reminder there if you have not already registered. And also, tomorrow's a big day for Mobile County. We have what we're calling the soft opening, but it's really the opening of the day use area for the Chickasaw, excuse me, the Esca Tapa, little sister to Chickasaw. The Esca Tapa Hollow Parking Campground. And which has been long, we've waited quite some time now, but it's looking beautiful out there. And we're going to have media there, and we invite anybody who can make it to come out and join us. Big kudos to the team who's worked on this to make it a reality. Our environmental services, the Parks and Recreation Administration, Communications. If I've left anybody out, I'm sorry, but your, everybody's efforts have been appreciated getting this. And of course, my commission colleagues who have been supportive of it, getting this, bringing this to fruition. So and I know Chickasaw Bog Park is underway as well. We we don't know yet when we have an opening date there, but it it probably will open in phases as well. Is that the plan?
I think so.
Yeah, probably back, same thing, probably day use, because I know there's a number of construction projects that are planned for Chickasaw Bog as well. And that's a, that's a wonderful park. And I say big sister because that one is eleven hundred acres and Esca Tapa is two hundred acres. And so, anyway, but.
I think right, go ahead.
When I looked at the schedule, it looks like we have a conference on the Wednesday or Thanksgiving. Did I misread that? I'll be here, but some people travel, and that's why I was raising it.
Just a.
You're gonna be here.
Right, yeah, I'm planning to.
If it's fine, I just wanted to make sure I didn't. And that's.
Is that okay with you?
I don't, I don't think so, I'll be here.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to.
I'm glad you brought it up, though.
I might be in the woods before, but I'll be here after. I was going to say, congratulations on the Esca Tapa Hollow. I know it's an exciting project for you, and you've worked very hard, and so has every everyone on staff. And it's going to be a huge asset to the community. I know a lot of people from all over Mobile County are excited about that park. I personally went out and looked, and I'm, I was very impressed with the work. It looks really good. Yeah, I did.
And this, and this is just the beginning. It's phase one A. We've got one B starting hopefully soon, too. Anyway, well, I think that is it for today, and we will adjourn this meeting until Monday.